Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting order. It's great to have everybody here in the council room. Appreciate everybody's patience on that. We'll open the meeting with a prayer from Steve Ayers from Lifeline Connect.
Let's pray. Lord, I thank you for tonight and I thank you for the men and women that are here to serve. I thank you for our community. Lord, I pray that you just give us guidance and wisdom. Lord, I pray that you bless our community. I pray that you give us perseverance to continue forward through these times. Lord, we just thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Marth.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Juan.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Klepper.
Here.
Okay, your approval of the March 1st regular council meeting minutes? Any additions or corrections? If not, I'll have a motion to approve.
I'll make motion to approve as written.
Second?
My second.
Roll call?
Juan.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Marth.
Yes.
Okay, you have before you the bills. Anybody got any questions for anybody?
I have a question. What did we need almost $19,000 worth of catwalk?
It's been an oxidation ditch from one side to the other.
Oh, yeah? Hmm, that's a lot of catwalk.
Okay, any other questions?
I was kinda curious. You had a body shop was busy for the tow on a car from Newville? Police Department?
Chief.
That goes... No, that was because the car was buried 600 yards out into a cornfield for a pursuit. It's next to bail record, not...we don't go by its own rotation.
Okay. Could we get that money back?
We'll ask for restitution when we see it.
Yeah.
We gotta find it first.
Still haven't found it. Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Why don't we just plan?
You made that as a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second?
My second.
Okay, roll call?
Marth.
I'm staying.
Klepper.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Okay, boards and commissions. I see the park board met March the 11th. Minutes are in the...anybody got any questions? I see Vowles here or Lindsey's here. Any questions for their meeting ahead? Okay. Council committee reports. Water and sewer committee met March the 10th.
Yeah, I said the minutes on your desk this evening are pretty general. I know Taylor had done some minutes too, but they're not here being more specific on what we had talked about. Basically, we were, you know, walked around the backside of paper drive looking at the easements, the old swell, seeing if there was some of the survey states were still there in some areas and some areas that were not. We've got some recommendations we want to bring to council, but we want to do that in executive session since it's a private property matter and then also through the easements. So, anybody have any questions?
Do that at the end of meeting, or not the end of meeting, but there at the end.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay, any questions for Mike? Any other committee reports? Administrator's report? Cap?
Nothing unless you have questions, although I will. As far as meeting with Metalink, the 911 center, nobody's ever got me any dates. So tomorrow I'll just send out a general to all the parties involved with some dates in April. Hopefully then people can narrow down whether it'll work or not work for them.
Are you looking for answers from the committee as far as dates or...?
Yeah, because you'd be the ones meeting with them unless that changed the property instead of water sewer.
I would just say that figure out what works for those other guys because they seem to be harder to nail down and that we could do our best to meet around their schedule.
Yep, see, I definitely think we've been asking and the date changes and everything else, I get a date from them. If you can be here, we'll try to be there.
I have a question for you. Can't...have you figured out anything for streetlight property to me as far as roofing?
Yes, just got some stuff today.
Okay.
Part of it I can't tell you.
Okay, then.
Well, I guess if I want to go to jail or be fined, I can tell you, so take a vote on that.
What was your question, Ron? I didn't catch it.
Any information on roofing so that we can go ahead and have a meeting about it as far as getting the numbers together?
On the city hall building, to make the repairs, just to keep it from leaking, it's up here on 2900. To replace the city hall roof totally, it is under the bid threshold.
Do you want all these numbers coming out in public?
That's why I'm not giving you numbers.
Okay.
Well, the repair is low enough.
Right, 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 right.
But anyway, to replace the entire roof is under the bid threshold. Now, the roof at our building in 108 North Main, to replace the entire roof is over the bid threshold. So that we'd have to bid out regardless of what their quote is, and that's why I can't give you their quote because then everybody else would know it. And he didn't even want to hazard an estimate on repairs because he goes it's one of those, once you start peeling back, you gotta find something else and something else and something else. So he goes that one, he wanted nothing to do with trying to give a fixed price. So one of them's over 50, one of them's under 50 for total replacement. I was waiting to hear back from what people want to do.
We had discussed three different ones. What was...was it this one?
The city hall in ours. I didn't have anybody look at PD.
Which one?
The police department.
Yes, PD.
I didn't have them look when they were here in town. I haven't had anybody look at the PD.
Okay. Do we still want to keep that in the mix?
Well, it's up to you guys.
No, you're the administrator. You know, you've been following this through. I haven't been around it. So, okay, let's keep...
I think at some point it's gonna need replacing.
Let's keep the PD in the mix while we're going through all this. If nothing else, just for...
I know that one over here get a high wind and the roof, you can see it moving.
Yeah.
See the nails go up too. I saw, witnessed that myself.
Didn't you guys replace one before it took over?
Yeah, then you butchered it up.
Just patched it up.
They did some patchings though.
Is it leaking?
Yeah, there was a rooftop unit up there one time that had a lot of leaks around it and they did some patching.
Okay. When Kirk was here and I was gone, they had somebody go up and said it's probably due to get replaced. But I thought it was just kind of gone by that as far as if they were looking at roofs, they might want to look at yours. If you're gonna fix three or tear them down and build Omega Flex, that's you guys' call.
Okay, so that is Taylor and Larry.
No. Streetlight property?
No, that...yes, streetlight property.
But I'm not on streetlight.
No, it's me, you, Larry.
Larry and Mike. Okay, okay. So we'll need to get together.
I figure the PD's probably gonna be similar to this building size-wise and roof-wise.
Isn't that something you want to put in the budget for next year? Is that what you're thinking?
I don't know what they're thinking.
Then you look into it.
I mean, that's beyond me.
Yeah, okay.
I would at least figure probably have to go to bid on the PDs too if you want to figure high.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But we haven't budgeted for this year, right, Cheryl?
Not really. But they wanted to come up with a long-term plan before they did anything, so...
Yeah, long-term. I like a new building.
Any other questions for Cap?
When's the gas company gonna be done on Ike?
When am I gonna become president of the United States? They came back today. I did not get over there at all today to see what kind of progress.
Yeah.
They figured from the time they started, they were planning for a week. Now whether it was four days, three days, seven days. But in the meantime, until they're done, Ho and Brink's not doing anything on Chicago because they want to wait for the gas company to get done at that intersection so that they can come down and actually hook the storm sewer up because it's backed up with a ton of water right now. So as soon as the higher gas is out of the way, then Ho and Brink will go in and make that connection, so I don't know how long that will take. And then they'll get back on Chicago Avenue and then at some point they're gonna back to the intersection, tear that up again to make another connection to Chicago High Intersection again. It's all right now, you know as much as I do time-wise, because I don't know how much progress they made today.
I seen them there working today. I don't know how much more they had to do.
They were putting pipe in. And then I guess on top of that is our wall. That company wants to come maybe the first, second week in April or fix it from the wreck last August. Well, once the road's semi kind of closed down, I'll probably still have to provide some people to watch, make sure they don't get clipped or whatever. They might need a weekend doing that wall pass.
Where's that?
The Rock Wall. Right, they're just past the park. It's called front of Wheeler's.
I don't mind and stop that tomorrow.
Okay, any other questions for Cap?
Okay, moving along.
I have a quick question for the park real quick. I had somebody ask, you know, it seems like a lot of kids are hitting the park playing basketball, doing some stuff. Are the restrooms open down there? Are they still using the Porta-John, I think?
I haven't...I asked Ken about what I should do, but I think I gotta contact the health department.
Okay, I was just wondering.
I'll wait until I see if they want to update anything on the health department.
Okay, it seemed like with the warm weather, a lot of people just wanted to get to the park and get out, so...
Well, I think Defiance County's still red, so there might still be restrictions on...and that's where, I don't know. I figure the health department will have to tell you what they're doing or what they want you to do.
Okay. Got any other questions? Solicitor's report, Troy?
First thing I have is ordinance number 2021-05. First reading by caption only, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency.
Any questions on that?
The update from the end of 2020 that'll get everything in the books and on the website up to date.
Make motion to suspend the rules.
Second? Roll call?
Beverly?
Yes, ma'am.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
The second, third readings of ordinance 2021-05 by caption only, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency.
So move. Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
And then resolution 2021-03, first reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, appointing Ron Jones and Mike Bailey to serve on the Defiance County tax incentive, review council on behalf of the village of Hicksville and declare an emergency.
Make motion to suspend the rules.
Second?
My second.
Roll call?
Beverly?
Sure.
Juan?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Second, third readings of resolution 2021-03 by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, appointing Ron Jones and Mike Bailey to serve on the Defiance County tax incentive, review council on behalf of the village of Hicksville and declare an emergency.
So move. Second?
Yes.
Roll call?
Marth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
That's all you have, Troy?
Yes.
Any questions for solicitor? Okay. Department heads. Chief Denning?
I don't have anything. I just came from a meeting with our collaborative, Ohio Collaborative representative. He was down to do his final inspection so that we were final certification for the Ohio Collaborative program. I just gotta do one more thing for the part-time guys and then we are good to go. And I forgot to bring our footwear stats with us, so I guess I'll bring those with us.
Got a little more activity on stopping trucks.
When I stopped out there, what, last week, I was...you were working on the radios? They were? Had that helped? I'm just... Never mind.
No answer.
I was hoping. We were hoping. No comment.
No comment. Sure. Any news on the cruisers showing up? Have they all...
Oh, yeah. They'll be delivered the 17th.
St. Patty's Day, pretty green.
And then once we get them, we'll, again, scheduled to get the markings on them and then we'll have them scheduled to get the radios put in them and I think we're good to go.
Any other questions for the chief?
Who's doing the vinyl work on them?
Jennifer Deitch. She did the black one that they got to do our thing to it, so...
Any other questions? Okay, Scott?
We've received part two of our FEMA grant...our new breathing air compressor and field station came in. So we're working on getting that hooked up. The truck is...the chassis has been ordered. That's all I know on that so far. And I think that's all I have.
Anything else to report?
I don't believe so.
Any questions for fire chief?
Any elected recruits?
Working on it. We have one...we have the one that's in the EMR class, so...
Five rating? Do we keep our rating at five?
Haven't received anything back yet. Yeah, we did have the ISO rating. They came and inspected some things. Hopefully we stay at a five.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Cap.
Park director?
Lindsey wants to speak.
Okay, Lindsey's the park president, so she's got a little report to do.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, the easy stuff. Kennedy Valena was approved as a lifeguard and we have another week to get applications in for...so what is it? The summer help. The summer help. So we'll have that the next time. We need to talk about these background checks. Park board unanimously decided, yes, this is the way we need to go. We're having some issues day one with several felonious parents trying to circumvent the system. We tried to backdoor their way in. I think it's important as a community and as a council and the park board that we stand strong and say the rules are the rules and we can't make exceptions for people. It's unfortunate for some people, but it is what it is. Believe me, I've been fielding phone calls and I've had people call me everything but white, but it...so, but it is what it is. And I spoke with a member of the sheriff's department and he said it is long overdue. So I think we're doing the right thing. I think it's important to note that it's not just coaches and assistant coaches, but if you're on a board, if you're responsible for any type of money coming in and out, in my opinion, you can't solicit funds from people in this community and then not submit yourself to a background check to see if you can facilitate those funds properly. So, and there's a chance that you'll be around these children anyways. So I think it's important that coaches, assistant coaches, and anybody that's on these boards or that takes money and needs to or runs these programs. Like I said, it stinks for some people, but I think we need to stand strong and we can't say, well, this is not what I wanted, or this is...or maybe we can get you in, or it just...if you can't pass the background check, you can't pass the background check.
So... Stand strong.
I'm trying.
I'm just curious more from a clarification standpoint as far as money coming in. I guess what are you referencing, like concession stand workers and all of that?
No, 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 no. I'm not saying going that far. I'm saying anybody that is...anybody that is, in my opinion, if you're gonna do that for concession stand workers, you're gonna have to pay the concession stand workers.
Yeah, and that's what I was just...
I mean, you're...it's a volunteer basis down there, okay? Or it's people that unfortunately now down at the Little League, and this is just my opinion, it's pay to play, but you can get your $50 back as a parent if you work the concession stand. And they just have a heck of a time because if you're like me, keep my $50, I'm gonna watch my kid play. So they have a really hard time getting people to work the concession stands. I think when you go that far, then when do you stop? Then somebody's gonna say, well, what about umpires? Or what about...
Right.
What about Little League teams coming in or for tournaments?
I was curious, you had referenced the soliciting money. Like what does that...
Okay, so what is that in compass?
Yeah, what are you talking about?
Okay, so I'm not gonna name any names or make anything public right now, but we do have a situation where there's a league that's kind of out there on their own and they're not underneath an umbrella of an association, okay? That particular person who I am told also has a felonious background and cannot pass background, does not have these funds under a proper...in a proper account with signatories. They're in his personal account. And when I called him, this person to say, this person in a very public meeting said that they no longer wanted to be in charge of this league, they wanted to back off. When I found a replacement, I found a guy that was excited to take over Pony League, Rob McCain, I don't know if you know him, but he was excited, ready to go. And this person, when I called him, they basically told me I'll turn everything over next year into kick rocks. So, and don't call him again. So what we need to do is we need to say, if you're going to solicit money, and what I mean is call Stan Saylor. Hey, Saylor's always been...I'm just using him as an example. Saylor's have always been a big supporter in this town of youth sports. If you're gonna call him and say, and we need you to support this program, then it needs to be set up in the proper channels. And the person that runs that money needs to be able to pass a background check. I think that we're protecting ourselves as a community because it's gonna look terrible on us if we don't.
I agree with all of that, but the village has nothing in that. I mean, that's an issue with the leagues and who they're doing. I mean, the village has...what the village has in it is letting people use our park who may be potentially abusing children, such and such. That's why we can mandate that from a standpoint of if you want to use our park, if your league wants to use our fields, you'll do the background check and anybody that doesn't pass, it's not allowed to be a coach or assistant coach, but the stuff to do with the money. I mean, that's between the ones that there's leagues on, if something's going on, that's a league issue. And the ones that don't have any under an umbrella, I guess that would be between the person who solicited the funds and the people they solicited it from and/or parents or something. But the village can't get in the business of trying to run those independent leagues or whatever. We're basically trying to guarantee to be the lawyer in the room. We're trying to guarantee that we don't have any...we don't want anything to happen to kids, I think everybody...
Right.
Everybody can say that. But from a legal end is that there's no potential liability on the village if something were to happen to the kids because we just kind of let everybody go down there and do whatever and it turns out there's somebody that's coaching T-ball that, you know, got convicted 20 years ago of being a child molester or something.
Right, and I get that, Troy, and I understand that. But at the end of the day, the contract that they signed with the park says that you have got to follow the rules and regulations set forward by this board, correct?
I'm just saying that shouldn't be one of the rules. We shouldn't be dipping into their money or how they're...
I'm not asking that. I'm saying that...I'm saying that not only the money part, right, but these people, if you're structuring a program, you're more than likely gonna be around these kids. You need to pass a background check. From day one, we can't have somebody circumvent the system and say, I'm not coaching, I might go throw a ball with them every once in a while, I'm gonna set the program up and I'm gonna set their schedules up. I just think it's a bad look and I think at the end of the day...
I don't have any problem with if there's other people that need to be included on that, but not because they're raising money or because they might be taking money from somebody. It's all about their contact with...
With the kids. Okay, so can we say...
People, I mean, you'd have...you gotta define it somehow though, is, you know, how do you define it? I mean, sure, there may be a parent that goes down there because his kid's practicing and there's an extra kid that they don't have to play catch with and he may grab his glove and, I mean, you're never gonna be able to completely stop that. But you don't expect that they're not gonna have close unsupervised potential contact with people. I mean, somewhere we gotta define it as, here's the people. And the way you do it in practices are one thing, but I know like over in Defiance, you can only have so many and those are the only people that are allowed on the field, like during the games especially. You know, if you're not...matter of fact, I think the one year that I coached like T-ball or whatever, you had a little like ID card type of thing and if you didn't have that on, you weren't out on the field.
And that's what we're leaning towards. And I respect what you're saying, Troy, but I'm saying that if you're gonna run the organization, right, you need a background check because you're gonna be talking to these kids. You're gonna be saying, you're on this team, you're on this team. So if you run the organization and if you're a coach, you need a background check. Everything else will fall into soup.
With everything you just said, and we're not involved in none of this, why is she talking to us?
Well, we're involved in the requiring the league, anybody that's using leagues that are using the park, requiring them to get background checks. That absolutely is our business because it's our field. And again, if we want to include somebody other than the head coach and the three assistant coaches because they're running the league, same with...not just the league you're talking about, say, like the baseball association. I'm sure there's a few of those people that aren't coaching any teams that are just working in administrative capacity for the board. I don't know because I don't...I don't know who's coaching and who's not.
I had a meeting with Lindsey today and I asked her to come because you're gonna have background checks and how many days do they have to...
Okay, so this is important. So as soon as this...what we're...another thing that we're dealing with, and it's unfortunate, is some other people that can't pass a background check are saying they're just gonna do it anyways. So what we need to do is the minute that that hits, hicksvilleohio.gov, the link is up, you pay your $10, there's your background check, correct? The minute that's up, you have 10 days. We've decided today, that's a good number. You have 10 days to submit to this background check. These coaches are already picked. You have that time period. If we do not do that, then they're gonna draw practices out, they're gonna do everything else, and we just need to set a time period.
Which would be the 25th.
Be the 25th.
That's the reason I asked. The council knew what the timeline was, and I think it's 100% council wants the background check, right?
What about, yeah, the baseball association or?
Absolutely. They're all clear.
They have to go out and, the coaches that don't want to comply, or, you know, some of those leagues that are complying. My hat's on them then, to make sure these coaches comply.
Their coaches.
Okay.
And they've adopted it into their bylaws as well.
Yeah. But we've already, we've already agreed to it.
Yes.
Our board's already agreed to it, so now all they have to do is do it.
Okay, can I say something really quick, though?
You can say anything.
Thank you. I kind of want this to be put on public record. Some of these phone calls I've been fielding is, well, it's none of your business what's in my background check, or why does the park board get to sit around and decide? I don't want to know. This is what it'll be. It'll go to Cheryl, and it'll go to Val, and it'll be basically a pass fail. Yes, you can, no, you can't. Absolutely. Nobody's sitting around saying Jimmy Johnson 20 years ago passed 17 bad checks. Nobody wants to know that. Yes, you can, no, you can't. Here's the answer. So I think that's important to say.
She's only been present, what, three weeks?
I've been present for three weeks.
Yeah, that's all. Thanks.
I would just like to also say that I got on this board to talk about walking trails, pickleball courts, Gaga ball pits, and sensory equipment for these autistic kids in town. This has been a mess.
Get your seat at this table.
You can keep it, you can keep it.
I was asking, Troy, we're gonna have to define some sort of, I guess, who, who is subject to a background screen. Because right now, you could say head coach or an organizer, or, but we need to decide, I guess, who's actually making that call, yes or no, who's responsible for monitoring those background screens? And then what standards they're being held to.
Do we do that, Taylor?
I'd love the park board. That's what I'm asking.
I would say the park board.
Okay, so Taylor, we talked about this at link, at link, sorry. What's gonna happen is once that, once that link comes up, okay? And Corey has wonderful information from Protect You Sports that'll tell you exactly what will get you, what will pass you, and what will fail you, okay?
So I guess let me interject here. I understand, like, the, was, I guess, what's being questioned, but we, if we're gonna enact this, we need to define what associations are subject to background screens and to what extent they're subject to background screen.
Okay, so I would say.
That's what I.
Okay, so I would say HBA, right? If you're a board member on that, if you make any decisions on where these kids go, who they play, money in, money out, I know that's not the situation here. HBO, coaches, anybody that's on the field with those kids. Same with the softball league, same with Pony League.
Does Pony League have an association? How do you?
So for years, Gary, tell me, don't grip. For years, they fell under the umbrella of the HBA.
That's what I always thought they were.
Okay, so we have another matter where.
So like in that instance, I guess, and this is, because I'm curious, do they sign a, like, a lease agreement with the village, like the HBA does?
See, what's messed up right now, what's messed up right now, and I have this contract, is it says Fields 3, 5, 6, and 7, correct? So 3, 5, 6, and 7. So the HBA, so T-ball, Little League and Pony, or, I'm sorry, I misspoke. T-ball, Pee Wee, and Little League all play on Fields 5, 6, and 7, okay? Little, or Pony League plays on Field 3. It is a contract they have to sign. The problem is, is I believe it says for the HBA, and it doesn't say for Pony League, and the HBA is saying that not until next year will they incorporate, incorporate the wrong word, absorb.
So we need to give by for one year, basically, and then they will fall under the umbrella.
And then they will fall under the umbrella. But until then, we need to be able to say, you're using park property, you're using Field 3, you need to follow by rules.
It's just the team, whatever. I don't know if there's more than one team or only one team, but.
Well, they talk about mini aces football, but mini aces football is used to use the school property, which that wouldn't fall because they're not using the park property, but then last year, my understanding, they're using the park property, so now they will have to fall under that.
That was per COVID. I mean, they would use school property if it wasn't COVID related.
They can go back to school property, because I absolutely do not want to deal with this.
Okay, thanks, Lindsay. Any other questions?
Well, I would, Lindsay, I thank you, because we've talked about this for a couple of years.
Sure.
I've been working really hard, and Corey, and different people, and trying to get a structured, just simple, easy background check, for the kids, and like I said, the association too.
Okay, thank you. I also want this on public record. With an issue with one of these parents, there seemed to be a conflict of interest with somebody that's on our board now that they thought would have affected their vote on whether to have the background check or not. That person is Adam Gubernow, who's on the board now. I want to on record that he was not even a member of the park board when this vote was taken, okay? So that rumor can be squashed. And Adam's a wonderful addition. He ran the Wasi Unrekt League for years. And I just think we're really lucky to have a busy guy like that on our.
Okay. Thanks for your dedication.
Okay, thank you. So my son's at home. Do I stay for the rest of the meeting, or can I go home? Okay, thank you.
You could have brought him.
You could have brought him.
If I can add, we're hoping that the link will be on the Village of Hicksville's website. Hopefully no later than Wednesday.
Okay.
And then they'll have 10 days from there, and it's all step-by-step process.
Okay, hey, I appreciate you guys' time.
Okay, Cheryl?
She said about Kennedy Valena, we're hiring her for a lifeguard, and I need your approval.
What was the first name?
Kennedy.
And that's for lifeguard? Okay, I'll recommend Kennedy Valena to be a lifeguard out the park. She has to do the.
Certification.
Yeah, certification.
Certification first? Okay, I'll do a recommendation upon her.
Good luck. I'll make the mayor's recommendation motion.
I'll second. Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes, ma'am.
Juan?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
Anything else? Any questions for Val? Thanks, Val.
Thanks, Val.
Thank you.
Okay. Cheryl, you're up.
You have a lot of collections reports, the fund status, and you also have the income tax, utilities, mayor's court, and police department collection reports. And you don't have any questions about those. Somewhere. Next month, April 12 through 17 is the health fair, spring health fair that we usually, council will pay for. Not all the extras, only the $45 one.
April when?
It's the week of the 12 through 17.
Need a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion that we do the health fair.
Okay, second.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Marth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yep.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
And that's all I have, if you don't have any questions.
You got anything else? Nope. Any question for Cheryl? Okay, mayor's report, had a meeting with the health department late last week. We may go to orange. We've been red for a long time. The numbers are looking good. It was just a year ago, it'll be the 20th of March, when we had our first COVID here in Hicksville. Yeah, the 20th is when that was, so it's been a long year. The cases are going down. January is 537 for Defiance County. February is 223. In March, it's roughly six to 10 cases a day, so it's definitely going down. So that's one of the reasons I decided to have the meeting in here, trying to get back to normal. And then I got this little gadget back here. They took down, they put the new doors in. They're not finished. And this was behind the cornerstone plaque or dedication plaque. They took it off, and this is what they found in there, a time capsule. Been there probably since 1965. So I'm thinking, do we put it back in there and put the plaque back on, or what's your, or if anybody in the public knows? Nobody probably, I talked to Don Brown today. He was on the council maybe a couple of years before that, and he had no recollection of this, so. They did, it's all copper, it's been soldered real nice. It looks like something I'd solder, not great. I'm hoping, you know, I don't think you want to open it, but what's your thoughts?
Let's put her back.
Put her back in the wall.
Yes.
Okay. But I thought it was kind of neat.
Let us open it then.
There it is. Oh, it's full. So.
There's our new megaplex.
There you go. So CDs.
No Bitcoins.
So if and when we cut this down, then we'll open it, so 50 years from now, or 10 years from now, or.
Just remember that before the demolition.
Anyway, I thought it was kind of neat. That's what everybody wants to do, put it back, put the plaque back on. Okay. If they find the public, anything about this?
I'd rather open it.
Give me a call.
And we close it?
That would be some good information. I've never heard of that.
Maybe there's some virus in there you don't know about.
So Pandora's box.
It's got Ron Beverly's great cards in it.
You might want to leave him sealed.
Okay, so I think I heard somebody wants to go into session.
Yes, go ahead.
Director of Session for property issues and discussion.
Anything else to litigation?
Possible litigation.
Can I second?
Roll call.
Klepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yeah.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
For the press, there won't be any decisions, will there?
Shouldn't be.